Okay, at this time, we'll call this, we'll call the Joint Architectural Board and Plan Commission Meeting to Order. There will be a Village Board meeting, or the Village Board will meet immediately after this. We do have a quorum. I'm just gonna call out the names, and our clerk is taking the role. I have Dino Zikis, David de Corsi-Bauer, Ann Walshlager, Chip Scherbinger.
Here.
Jeff Fannerstill is here. That's myself, Tim Holquist.
Here.
Jeff Bierman.
Here.
All right. That's your Plan Commission. So with that, we will allow public comments. If anybody would like to step towards the podium and speak, feel free to step towards the podium and speak your mind. Anybody on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
Or that wants to speak in public comment. All right, we don't seem to have anybody that wants to speak in public comments, so we'll move to our first item on the agenda, which is Plan Commission Review and Consideration of Heartland Quarry, A Proposed PUD Development Project Whose Approval and Rezoning Is Being Sought By Three Leaf Partners LLC On Property Tax Keys HAV0730981, HAV0730985, HAV0730986, and HAV0730987, Located At 700 and 701 West Capital Drive. The Plan Commission is going to review and will consider proposed rezoning and PUD agreement for the project. Just to note, in attendance, we do have our Building Inspector, quite a few members of the Village Board for the meeting that's gonna happen after this. We have our Village Engineer here, our clerk, our Village Manager, our Village Attorney, and some other members that are here. So with that, let's roll.
All right, so where we left off with the Plan Commission was everything was approved except for the Plan Unit Development and the rezoning of this project. Over the last numerous months, we've had numerous meetings with Three Leaf Partners, their attorney, our attorney, staff. We've come up with a Plan Unit Development that I feel very comfortable with. I believe they feel very comfortable with. There are some comments that we have gone over recently that will change a couple things in this. I believe Ryan Atman has some of those comments related to the deposit amount for, and I forget what else, if there's other items that we have. But I'll let Derek, Hector, anybody who has anything to say in regard to this, or any questions from the Plan Commission?
If it's okay, one thing I'd do. Well, we can start with the Plan Commission. I was gonna say I'd like to throw it out to staff. I wanna just start with the engineer, move to the Building Inspector. I do wanna hear from our attorney, and then I do wanna turn it over to the people developing the project. And if anybody on the board has questions along the way, absolutely speak, and obviously you'll have a chance to speak as well. So Mr. Atman, if you would like to go first, if there's any issues, number one, that you could give to the board that you have, just a brief, your thoughts.
Just a couple of highlights. The last number of months working with the development team, the last time we spoke, the slope management plan for the perimeter slopes, I feel like that's been adequately addressed. There's a long-term maintenance agreement in place to monitor those, to make sure they're at the acceptable level after they're constructed. The Capital Drive improvements, the Three Leaf Development Team is coordinating with QuickTrip, and Capital Drive will essentially be rebuilt from Veddelson up almost Highway 83. We've worked pretty extensively with the group in terms of the 15 or 18 exhibits that are attachments to the PUD, and I feel confident that they're in good order.
Thank you. Mr. Hussinger?
Just would like to say that the underlying zoning of RM1, that this project is supported by the village's RM1 zoning.
Can you elaborate, because we have the rezoning in front of us. When this, if this were approved, that makes that zoning possible. Is that correct?
That's correct, with the PUD overlaid on top of it.
Mr. Delamora, our Village Attorney.
Actually, I do not have any major legal issues to bring to your attention. However, I do want to draw your attention to a policy decision which the Plan Commission and the Village Board should consider. If you have your materials and look at the development agreement, lines 880 through the end of that section.
If any of the Village Board members, if any of the Village Board members want to come and sit in the seat so that they can see it, it is on the screens up here as well.
Yeah, and I will also read it so that there's a general understanding. My understanding from my participation in the negotiations here from the beginning was that Three Leaves was in it for the duration, that it would build this out. And that was my guiding directive. I spoke with Mr. Fannerstill several times, and he emphasized that he wanted to see this built. Initially, I raised a very point-blank question, how long are you going to hang on to this? And I asked 10 years, maybe five years, and they assured me, as you were assured by one of the principals in Three Leaves who came here out of uniform, and basically assured you that they basically wanted to be part of the community. At the 11th hour, the request was made for their ability to transfer ownership interests in this project before it was completed. And I will be the first one to underscore the fact that this is not a legal issue. But it is a policy issue. And what has been difficult to analyze is, is that a reasonable step to allow, given the complexity of this particular project? The slope issues, the management of the various phases, because they're going to be building from the entrance all the way to the back. Article 18 reads as follows, "Transfer Restrictions Until the Occurrence of Substantial Completion of the Apartment Project, Defined as Issuance of Certificate of Occupancy for Buildings Representing at Least 134 Units of the Apartment Project, Developer will not sell, transfer, or assign the Apartment Project Asset or the Membership Interests in Developer for the Apartment Project Assets, unless (a) to another owner, investor, developer, real estate investment trust, real estate manager, general contractor, or similar real estate operator or company which owns or has owned, developed, or constructed multifamily apartment properties aggregating to at least 267 units," which is, by the way, the number that are allowed here in this project, "or owns, is a primary investor, or manages multifamily apartment properties aggregating to at least 1,000 units, as to be certified in writing by Developer to the Village, or (b) as required by a federal state bankruptcy or other law applicable to Developer or otherwise required by Developers, construction lender, or other lenders, loan documents for the Apartment Project, or membership interests in Developer serving as collateral for loans made to finance the Apartment Project. For the avoidance of doubt, Developer will not be required to disclose the identity of the potential acquirer of the Apartment Project Asset or the Membership Interests in Developer for the Apartment Project Asset as part of Developers' written certification to the Village, following either substantial completion or written certification from Developer to the Village described in this Section 18A. At such time, this restriction shall automatically terminate without any further action required of the Village or Developer." So essentially, even before they get the occupancy permit for half of the units that they're supposed to build, they can transfer it to another party, provided this other party has had ownership or involvement in the development of 267 units, or has some kind of ownership interest in at least 1,000, or investment interest in 1,000 units. Now, I've characterized it in a very simplified fashion, but that's the reason why I read it to you. And it's one thing to allow for the transfer. It's another thing to not have to disclose to the village who they're transferring it to. Now, I can understand that they do not want their possible flipping of the project or transferring of the project, however one wants to characterize it, to be frustrated by the village speculating who the buyer is. But this language does not obligate them to even disclose who ultimately is the party that has the beneficial interest in this particular project. So, but again, as I've said before, this concern is not a legal concern of mine, but it is a concern with regards to the assignment that I was given in undertaking representation of the village, that I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Could you give an analogy of what could happen where you would say that's why this was a concern?
In my mind, this is a very complicated project. We brought in more consultants than we've ever involved. And the last major, major project that the village had of this kind was Bristol Cone Pines, where we forced the developer to even hire another golf course architect to advise us. And they saved money, they buried the water lines to the appropriate depth, given the frost conditions we have here in Wisconsin. If they have a party that is unsophisticated, or basically pay the premium price for this, I believe that there will be a built-in incentive to try to economize in the continuation of the construction of the project. And in this particular situation, for example, we have insisted on, and they have agreed, to put up either cash or a letter of credit to address any problems associated with the slopes to the tune of $100,000. However, that's only good for 30 months. And we have a provision in here that basically says that if there is a default by the developer, or whoever is steering the bus, we cannot force them to go through with the construction. In other words, we've given up specific performance as a contract remedy. So potentially, we could have a party that is either unsophisticated, or ill-informed, or aggressively trying to economize here. And if there's a delay, and the clock runs out, the shot clock runs out on us in 30 months, we don't even have any money to basically undertake the corrective work. We did build in some mechanism whereby we, in effect, can impose a special charge, but that involves us chasing after them, and proving the amount, that it was reasonable, that it was for their benefit, and there's a delay in the recovery of those funds. So at the same time, as you weigh this, you'll have to consider the reality that there have been numerous other potential developers that have looked at this project, have gone to certain stages, and have backed off. And that, to me, means that this is indeed a very difficult project, and it takes the right kind of entity to manage it. And I believe that through their firsthand exposure to the challenges here, working with their designers, their engineering firm, and so forth, they are in the best position to deliver the project that the village has been hoping for. And if they step out of those shoes, there's nothing in this agreement that assures us that the technical know-how sophistication or ability to marshal workforce is going to be in place.
Does the capital improvements have to be done on the entire site?
Did all the capital improvements have to be done on the site, slopes, all the grading, roadways, sewer, water? Is that all to be put in before the first units are built? Or does that continue from one unit to the next?
It's going to be done in phases. They're basically going to start with the demolition, the grading, and then the infrastructure installation. And I'll defer to Mr. Atman on this, but my understanding is, as they come in, they will do the first buildings and units. And as they move on, they're gonna move towards the back of the pit. So it's gonna be group of buildings by group of buildings. So it's not gonna be get the site ready. It's ready for the next person to come in and just erect the structures. Am I correct in that regard?
Yes, that's a good description of the approach for the phasing.
Anybody else have questions, or for the attorney?
Well, my only question was of the PUD document that we received, there's comments listed on, like, have those been addressed?
Well, some of them, practically all of them have been addressed. The ones that haven't been addressed await the closing of this particular transaction. For example, they have to name the village as an additional insured during the construction of the project. At the conclusion of the project, they have to go out and get casualty insurance so that if unfortunately the place collapses, they can collect and rebuild. And we have something that can be assessed to continue the TIP payments. The village has committed to pay out a little under $16 million, except for the recovery of the administrative fees to the tune of about $5,000 a year, and the recovery of some additional funds to offset the fact that the village is not collecting upfront its impact fees, and to offset also the fact that the village is fronting, at least based on the current estimates that we have, fronting about $875,000 of sewer upgrades from here to Delhart. So that's what we can recover. But the rest of the money is all going to serve as their collateral for their loan.
Anything that staff has to add to that before I turn it over to the, thank you very much. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to the developer at this time.
Thank you. Derek Taylor here on behalf of Three Leaf Partners, and my colleague John Ford is also on by phone. And I believe John may have to drop here in just a couple minutes, so I may yield the floor first to John, and then I can go from there. John, if you're available.
Yeah, thanks, Derek. Can you guys hear me all right?
We're good.
All right. I do apologize. I completely planned to be there in person tonight. We had a medical emergency on our team that I'm covering down in Illinois on business for another development, so I do have to jump in for the seven o'clock meeting here. But just to address a little bit what Attorney Delamora commented there, and Derek can get into more of the legal side of it, I just wanna make clear, we absolutely have 100% intent to develop this development. We've never stated throughout the process that we have an intent to sell this. All we're asking for, from a legal standpoint, and in the PUD agreement, is that we, not unlike any other developer, doesn't want to be restricted or handcuffed, given, you know, economic times. We have agreed within the PUD agreement, within that section that Hector was referencing, that we cannot transfer, we have restriction until we have 50% of the units delivered. I would suggest for other developments, other developers, no one has ever even agreed to this much of restriction previously, which in addition to that, as Hector outlined, a future buyer has to meet certain requirements that should give the village very much comfort in the sophistication of who that could be. Like I said, though, we have absolutely 100% intent to see this development through the end. Just a couple of comments I wanted to make, and then I'll turn it back over. You know, obviously, we started this process a year ago. It was back in February of '23 that we had those initial concept review meetings. You know, and I stated, we had two goals. One was to make an impact through real estate, and we'd be collaborative with the village. And we have, I can say, worked tirelessly throughout the last year or so through architectural design, civil design, landscape, environmental, geotechnical, you know, collaboration with the village staff, and in all the consultants, it's been a great process. We've done extra analysis, you know, additional borings were done to completely understand the site and provide a design that will be completely safe and generate that impact for the Heartland community. You know, I do wanna publicly thank Ryan Bailey, the entire village staff, you know, Dave, Scott, Sandy, and everybody for their collaborative efforts, the countless meetings that we've had throughout. Ryan Atman has been instrumental with Ruker-Milke, and certainly Greg Johnson from Eller's standpoint from a TIF, and certainly Attorney Delamora as well, as the last couple months focused on the PUD agreement. Just, you know, a quick project update overall. As you all know, we continue to see very challenging economic times in the overall market. You know, while I can't provide an exact date when we will commence construction of this project, what I can tell you is we continue to see strong interest and make very good progress on a variety of fronts from the development, in order to get to a point where we can commence construction. Earlier this year, for example, we closed on the land, so Three Leaf Partners does now own the land. Last week, we received DNR approval, so that box has been checked. From a design standpoint, construction documents are well underway over the last couple months, and they're progressing very nicely. We're in conversations weekly with We're in conversations weekly with a general contractor that has budget prices project. They have the fifty percent CD out for budget pricing right now that we'll have in the next week or two. So that continues to proceed. And most importantly, especially in these economic times, debt and equity. We've had multiple debt lenders out to the site, tour the site, active conversations with them, as well as institutional and very large equity potential interested parties, that we continue to have those conversations. So I can say, you know, our goal, while we can't give you an exact date of when we're going to start construction, our goal would be to close on financing this summer and commence site work immediately thereafter. Approval of the PUD agreement tonight will certainly afford this project another major step towards commencing that construction. As we've had throughout the last year in all these meetings, we've always brought all of our design team members. Some of them are in person there tonight, others are virtually here. We'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
I have one real quick. John, while you're on, this is Jeff.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, I mean, obviously, the village would like to see that it's our choice, obviously, through all the meetings and all the presentations and getting to know each other so well with all of these meetings. But in all reality, we would really like to see Three Leaf, you know, handle this all the way through to, you know, the conclusion. Can you give an analogy or just describe a little bit what kind of scenario would cause Three Leaf to turn it to another party? And I'm just saying hypothetical. I can only come up with one in my head, but I want to be corrected if I'm wrong. And I'm thinking, okay, if someone comes in and, for whatever reason, they're like, hey, we want to make a name for ourselves, so we're going to give you a boatload where it's worth your while, and you're getting your money, you may decide to sell, and they check off all the boxes where you could sell this, I'm going to call it opportunity or project, to somebody else. Can you give an analogy to everyone here on what would cause you to say, you know what, we're going to sell, we're going to bounce out, we're not going to see this to conclusion. We're going to sell. Or, you know, transfer this opportunity and then not tell the village who is actually doing it? Can you just give a brief on that?
I'll let Derek get into the legal side as far as, you know, disclosing and why that can't be realistic in a potential, if there was that process. I mean, what we don't want to do, Jeff, at any time is restrict or handcuff our investors, depending on all the different developments that we do. And from an economic standpoint, you know, if we're approached and it means, if it's the best benefit to our investors, we need to make that decision. This is obviously a challenging and complicated development that we all know. And, you know, the restrictions that we have agreed to should absolutely show you guys that this is going to be Three Leaf. We can't even sell it until it's fifty percent developed. Fifty percent of the units have been delivered. So Derek, do you want to talk on the legal side of things?
Yeah, happy to do that. So, I mean, as John said, we're fully committed to Heartland. I just want to reiterate that. I think you guys know we actually have another project that we've brought forward to the community here. So if there's any que- and we've developed here before, and our predecessor from before Three Leaf Partners came into existence. So we're very committed to the community here in Heartland to put that to bed. But, you know, I think what John's saying there in terms of the ability and transfer restrictions, we can't disclose to the Village of Heartland and municipality and instrumentality of the state government, who a potential buyer or buyers, because you could have theoretically multiple people doing, and without doing that, entering into the public domain, into FOIA requests X, which would wreck the market, it would wreck the- and we are bound to confidentiality when we engage, if we do, with a buyer. We're bound to confidentiality with them. So to do that, to disclose that, would obviously waive that confidentiality with them. And they wouldn't even engage in a process with us if they knew that we could put their name out into the public domain before we even have a deal struck. We're not intending to do that. We are fully intending to build this thing, stabilize it, because that's what we've sold to our investors, to the people that we're talking to, who are interested in, and to ourselves. It doesn't make sense to half-develop a project and then sell it. We're going to sign on for about eighty million dollars of debt and equity between the lender and our investors. So it would not be in our interest, or our investors' interest, or in our lender's interest to do that. And we'd have a lot of bigger problems if we're trying to transfer this thing up prior to completion or even stabilization. So it's more of a theoretical risk. And to be clear, we never asked to be able to sell this thing prior to completion. We were asked, will you agree that you can't transfer it or sell it until stabilization? And we said, we've never been asked that before. And in fact, I've looked at other agreements that Attorney Delamora has done for other developments. They weren't asked to do that. So what we have drafted here and included in this agreement is really something to the village's benefit that no other community that we're doing TIF in right now has asked for that. So you guys are getting something more than anybody else that we've done developments like this, or any developments with TIF for that matter. So that's a couple of kind of legal reasons. I wanted to address just a couple of other quick things so that you guys know. I mean, yeah.
May I stop you for just a second? Trustee, treachel, are you okay? I know you got to bounce. I'm sorry, he's just, he's getting-
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'll have to leave in a little bit. But I just wanted to offer up, you know, there seems to me that there's a lot of cross-checks that make this project viable. And in my view, I'm in approval of approving the PUD.
I just wanted to give you the time because I know you had to bounce and if you had something that you wanted to ask.
No, I think the thing is, as you were pointing out just now, you know, with the time that you've committed to the project and with your investors, it wouldn't look good. It'd be very difficult for you to go a different direction. So again, I'm in approval.
I just wanted to toss it because I know that you got to go. And I appreciate you coming in, especially on a special meeting.
My apology for having to depart early.
All good, all good.
Okay, thank you.
No, I think you're right on that, just a couple of other points I was going to make. This PUD agreement will be recorded in its entirety and will run with the land. So just to put that at ease as well, if somebody ever did buy this, whether before completion or before stabilization or even after, they will still be bound by the agreements that we have in this development agreement and some of the other separate exhibits that we're going to record here with respect to the slope monitoring that we've talked about, with respect to some public easement ways for people to walk the sidewalks in the site. Future developers have to live by that too. And if they don't, then they'd be in breach or default of this agreement, and the village would be protected from having to release the available tax increment to, whether to us or a future developer. So if we're not complying with the agreement, the village is protected. It's recorded and it runs with the land. You can't get away from this agreement.
If I can just throw in a question, one thing I want to ask is going to the, after the sale. I know you're talking pre-sale, that, I mean, no one's going to walk into that and be like, yeah, I put it all out there, and it's, I get it. After, at that time, then it would become public or at least known to the village, who purchased it.
That's correct.
And I just wanted to make sure, that would never be where Three Leaf's holding it. And they're like, no, we're not going to tell you who. I'm guessing, I'm just asking.
That is correct. And many times the way that works is, once you have an agreement and they start to work on closing on the acquisition of the transaction, they're going to ask probably for some sort of an estoppel from the village about some of the things in the agreement that may not be relevant anymore, that may have been completed, like the letter of credit, if that's been released. So it's, you probably will find out even before the transaction closes. We just can't be the ones to disclose it. It would be, you know, incumbent on the buyer to decide when they want to confront the village with, you know, carrying out the obligations of the PUD agreement.
Sure, I just wanted to clarify that. Does anybody on the plan commission have questions for the- or anyone on staff have questions for the? I don't usually turn it over to staff only because you guys have all met. I mean, a couple of times anyway. But anybody that does have anything for the developer, feel free. But anybody on the commission?
The more recent other major project that I completed of representing a municipality which is now being constructed is the Mandell School Sister Project. And that's an eighty-seven million dollar downstroke. What you were not told by Mr. Taylor is that in that agreement, which is also recorded, there is a guarantee, a personal guarantee by Barry Mandell that the structure, which we pegged at a minimum value of forty million dollars for purposes of assessment to generate the revenue needed to pay off obligations of the village, were personally guaranteed. Nobody is guaranteeing anything here. They're basically saying, in the language that I read to you, look at it, that they don't have an obligation to disclose it to you. And what Mr. Taylor fails to tell you that under Wisconsin Public Records Law, certain confidentiality agreements can be entered into on a but-for basis. For example, a victim of a crime does not want her name released because of a sexual assault. Until such time as there's a filing of a charge, that information or the information about an informant can be withheld. If you read the literal language that's been proposed for this section, there's no obligation on their part. I'm concerned about the village not ever knowing. And conceivably, under that language, what they could do is, first of all, the LLC is newly created, the LLC holds the land. They could sell memberships in the LLC. And so on the legal surface, nothing changes from the perspective of the village, except that the operating arrangements can be drastically modified. That's the concern that I have. The question was asked, what would the motivation be to transfer it before the property is completely built out? Again, I read the language to you. The language reads that if they complete fifty percent or if they find a buyer that qualifies in terms of having developed two-hundred-and-sixty-seven units or owns an interest in a thousand units, they can take that route. What would motivate them to do it? Well, obviously, profit. And there's nothing wrong with profit. This is a capitalist society, and they're entitled to that. But the thing that holds me back is, they talk about an eighty-million-dollar equity investment. Sixteen million of those dollars are coming from the taxpayers, the people who will not see the tax revenue for twenty-seven years. And why would they want to transfer? Well, it could be simple operational challenges. For example, they may have too many projects on their plate to manage. We all know that there's a shortage of qualified labor and qualified managers, particularly in the commercial construction area. And so that would be a reason. And it's a legitimate reason. I'm not, I'm not in any way suggesting that their desire to have that option is in any way inappropriate or undesirable. It's just that the people that we've been dealing with could be gone. They have every intention. Well, intentions aren't reflected here because they're not enforceable. And if they have every intention of sticking with this project, why would they have insisted that we not have the remedy of being able to go to court and say, Judge, they defaulted, they breached the contract. We want you to issue an order that they perform the contract. You've seen that. For example, you're buying a piece of real estate, and your buyer, for some reason, has a change of heart and decides not to go through with the transaction. You have the right to get specific performance to get the buyer to sell you the property. We don't have that ability.
Hold on real quick here, I just want to talk a little bit. We were talking about the Village of Elm Grove TIF, so I want you guys to understand a couple of things of why I'm in agreement with this PUD. The Village of Elm Grove is fronting the developer eight-point-four-six-six million dollars. So without a personal guarantee from Barry Mandell, they could walk from the eight-point-four, not develop, and never get that money back. They're also doing three-point-nine million of long-term debt, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars of infrastructure costs. Here, this is a hundred percent Pago TIF. So by this development, they will have their three condo buildings developed, their pool hall or their rec center developed, and a hundred-and-thirty-four units of apartments developed. There's no money outlay for the village, except for the eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, which if that's developed, we will get all of that back. We get the first crack at the first thirty-five thousand or forty thousand. Thirty-five thousand. This is a Pago TIF. What you are doing compared to what Elm Grove did is way safer. They're giving nine million dollars upfront, plus nine-point-eight million in Pago. They're giving twenty-three-point-two million dollars in TIF. Some of that is upfront, some of that is Pago. Ours is a hundred percent Pago. And we will have, I would guess this is about seventy percent development. So there's been a little bit of back and forth. I am a hundred percent in agreement with this PUD.
No, and just to clarify, just so everybody knows what's going on. Obviously, everybody's in a different, the developer is doing what the developer is doing. Obviously, it's sitting down at the table and trying to make it all happen. Hector, our attorney is not hired to make sure that the developer is protected or even to be their friends. Hector is hired to make sure that Heartland is in the best situation under any situation that we go with. So I just want to clarify that for everybody so everybody knows. But our attorney is going to try to make sure that we are in the absolute best position. But go ahead, if you have anything else.
No, I yield to Mr. Bailey's analysis. And that was a mechanism that was used in the Elm Grove situation to cover the exposure of the village.
And that's all I was getting at is, they need that forty million dollars to get their TIF money back. If they don't get that in Elm Grove, they get nothing. Here, if they develop three-quarters of it, we still get it. They're just missing the back half of the project. There's worse things in the world.
If they're missing the back half of the project, do we have any remedy to try to get that built or not? Okay, I just, no, I just, I also want to ask, because talking about the, you had made mention, Mr. Delamora, about the getting economical. As the building goes, I do know that we have codes and certain things that go into this that will fall into material and things like that. Are either one of you, our engineer or our building inspector especially, because you've been involved on different developments we've done in Heartland where it's like they'll show us the products they're going to be using. For instance, they can't come and say they're going to use a certain type of siding and then all of a sudden throw vinyl on. And maybe I'm wrong, I think these are important questions to ask, I just want to-
They're obligated to develop the project per the approved plans. Approved site and building plans.
I think it's important questions to ask, you know.
For sure.
Because that wouldn't- Got to go by the microphone, please.
Those plans and specs are explicitly referenced in the PUD agreement. So if we were to not do that, that also would be a default under the PUD agreement. Couple of things I want to, if I can, while I'm standing here, address. I know Mr. Delamora said he was concerned about us potentially selling the membership interest or investor interest. He said that we've protected that, that's line eight-eighty-three. I'll just be brief, but that's in there, you can see. Or the membership interest in developer language in there. So we've already addressed that concern. And I would also direct your attention to lines five-seventy-eight through five-eighty-one, where we are, prior to getting a building permit, we're going to show the village that we have executed a completion guarantee for this project with our lender. And then there's additional language in here related to that as well. So, you know, So, you know, to sort of echo some of the things that Mr. Bailey was saying, we've adequately, we are taking on more than the risk of, of the PUD agreement and what we're guaranteeing to our lenders and to our investors, fully committed to this project. And the village has, is all the rights and remedies that it needs in this PUD agreement. And we've worked very collaboratively for quite some time now with Ryan and staff here to get this thing to where it's at. So we really appreciate that collaborative effort and we feel really encouraged. And this is our, by the way, our number one project. This is the one we start, every Wednesday, we have our executive team meetings at nine AM. We start with this project. This is number one on our list. So I can tell you that as well. This is top of mind for us.
Mr. Delamora, since you're here, I do want to ask a question. We have two members of the village board that are here because you know we're going to go right into a village board meeting. Is it permissible for me to, they can't get too much into the discussion because we're in plan commission. Can they at least ask their questions now or must they wait until the village board meeting?
I don't see any reason why they can't because it's a collective decision.
I wanted to make sure that, because we're going to be voting separately. But Mr. Trustee Pfeiffer has a question, so I am allowed to ask then.
I, I just want to.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Respond to one thing. There's no question. Mr. Taylor is absolutely correct. They have to come and show us some paperwork about their loan. But if they sell, it doesn't say in this agreement that the same financing arrangements continue or are transferable to their buyer. It could be a separate arrangement. So it, it's, it's assurances that when we start off, all systems are go. But if they transfer, it, it, there is uncertainty.
No, I'm going to let, he has, trustee Pfeiffer has a question. I'm going to allow him to ask it.
Could we go back to the section eight eighty-three or line eight eighty-three? Whoever's controlling this thing.
Yes.
So Hector, this is the article that you read to us. And I just, the question that I have, there was, it's been stated, you know, we have to build a hundred and thirty-four units. And we keep talking about these hundred and thirty-four units. But the word that's killing me is unless. You don't have to build a hundred and thirty-four units. You could build one unit as long as, who you sell it to meets the criteria in A or B. So if the word unless was and, I'd feel a lot better about that paragraph. But you're not obligated to build anything, really.
Yeah, it's, this is where it's meant to stop. So right here, you're saying, until the occurrence of substantial completion of the apartment project, blah, 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 of that, the developer will not sell, transfer, or assign the project asset, blah, 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 unless to another owner. So you're, I think what you're reading is, so until this is done, they can't do this. Developer will not sell, transfer, assign the project asset or ownership unless it is to somebody that is disqualification. So Derek, what he's seeing is lines eight eighty to line eight eighty-three, line eight eighty to eight eighty-two. At that comma, when he reads the next three lines, he sees the word unless. But the unless is trying to point out who is qualified, correct?
Correct.
But the one thirty-four has to be built.
So why don't we just put a period after that?
Is that, Hector, is that accurate? Is that how you read that as well? That there was a period at the end?
You and I are reading it the same way.
So if you put a period though, at the end of the parentheses.
After the word asset, you're saying?
No, after the word project in the parentheses, period. Then it will say, the developer will not sell, transfer, or assign unless it is A to another owner, that type of thing. Derek, any disagreement with that?
In case we have to ever look back on this, can you guys state what line you're referring to, when the words are on there? Just for, in case anybody has to look back on this or listen back on this in quite a few years, it'd be very difficult for them to decipher where exactly we're talking. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just rereading.
I think, I think Ryan Bailey is correct. If the comma.
Change it to a period.
Period.
Any issue with that?
But I was working with, with the comma.
Why?
This is, we, we very carefully went through this language. We are, the concern that was expressed by attorney Delar More when we created this language was, what if early on in the project, we turn it over to somebody who doesn't have the level of sophistication that we do to be able to carry out the obligations of the PUD agreement and cause it to get to completion? And we said, okay, fine, we'll handle that by saying that if that scenario, which is a doomsday scenario for us, were to occur, then we are going to say to you, we won't do it to anyone else unless they've either, in short, developed a project of this same size or they own or invest in a thousand-plus units, meaning they have four times this size in their portfolio. To, and, and that would, that would take care of the fear that the village have that it'd be an unsophisticated party stepping into our shoes. The other caveat that you'll find in here is that if we were required to divest of this before that substantial completion, before that hundred and thirty-four units, because of, we went bankrupt or because our lender made us because we're not paying them, we also have to have the ability to do that. That's what this language says, is that the village, if this doomsday scenario happens, you know, if we're selling it to another developer or owner of real estate, it's somebody who's sophisticated because we've defined them as somebody who's done a project of this size or bigger or they own a thousand-plus units. That's what this language means, in eight eighty through eight ninety-seven.
Yeah, line eight eighty-four says an owner though, doesn't say developer. Line eight eighty-four, that you could sell it to some, to another owner. So if somebody owns, not developed.
So I think we could, yeah, that's probably, that was probably an oversight. In A, if we struck owner.
I think you'd have to strike owner, investor, trust, real estate manager, general contractor. I think you'd have to say unless the developer.
Well, it could be, yeah, you could have a, sure. Because then the second part of this is if they're sort of a non-developer, but they own a lot of units. That's the point, the, the point of the second part of this.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. I think that first part, owner needs to go out of there, investor.
Yeah, I think we could, we could agree to revise that language to address that.
I mean, while we're all going, but you can stay, and you can stay under.
I once had an attorney that I was associated with who testified in court as an expert on the comma. Commas and punctuation does matter. I would agree with Mr. Bailey that if we changed that comma to a period and there is an elimination of passive owners in, in that sentence, that it would get us closer to the situation that we'd like to be in. Except that you do have a lot of, for example, in the Milwaukee Journal, they've been featuring over the last year or so, how out-of-state equity companies, largely from California, have been selling securities and buying single-family homes and not maintaining them appropriately. And Milwaukee has a crisis and people ask why. Well, because compared to the coasts, prices here are very attractive and economical. And so again, if that were to be modified, I guess it would provide some more protection for the village. But still, the risk remain, which is something that the board has to evaluate.
And, and since we're really wide open right now, I, I actually am understanding both sides of saying, put a period in because it does give the assurance to the village. I do have concerns for the village on if it would hit a point of having to liquidate. Not, let's not call it liquidate, having to sell or at least having the ability to sell because you're going through a bankruptcy. If they aren't at fifty percent completion, the wording would then say, you're a quarter of the way done. But the, and I'm not saying Three Leaf would be going down. They wouldn't even, technically, they wouldn't even have the option to sell to a qualified developer. I'm just saying, I see both sides. It does give us a better assurance with the period. What'd you say?
I said he can come up to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be worse for the village.
Of course.
And by the way, the village can't preempt federal bankruptcy laws, which is what B, part B, so we can't put a period in. It's not allowed, not legal, can't do that. We could further qualify sub A, like we were talking about just now, about who that developer is. But that would be worse for the village if we're like, you're not allowed to. And we're like, guys, we're trying to make sure this project gets done by selling it to a qualified developer. And you're like, nope, not allowed to. That would be worse for the village and for us and for everybody.
And that's what I'm saying, but I agree with both. I mean, yeah, the period would give us, you know.
I have never practiced in the bankruptcy area. But I do know that the federal laws override these contracts. They can be nullified. So my solution to what is being suggested here would be, insert the period, delete the reference to the federal law is superfluous here because a federal court can nullify the contract and sell it, the trustee in bankruptcy can sell it to whoever it nominates and they move on.
So here's where I'm at, as, because I mean, we, you know, we're going back and forth. That is our attorney, that's our legal opinion. We are hearing from the developer. We've heard from, and I, I'm getting, throw it one last time. Mr. Antman, Mr. Hussinger, for this body, if there's reservations, it would be very important right now that the plan commission and the members of the village board know it. And if there are none, that's fine, but just, I mean.
I support the project.
Okay.
I support the project as well.
I just want, okay. So we do have, I mean, that is the legal opinion coming from our attorney. And, and, and the reason that I'm kind of jumping the gun on this, unless someone has some more questions, I think it's been very thoroughly gone over that it sounds like, however many doc, however many pages this document is, that we've got it down to one section, which is basically from line eight eighty through eight eighty-seven, let's say, or eight ninety. And I think it's at a point where it's going to be up to the board to decide what they think is best for the Village of Heartland. Obviously, I'll open the floor back up for people to give their opinions. But this would be for plan commission first. But the, we have a property that sat for a very long time, that no doubt about it. A lot of people have walked it. It's a blighted property. It'd be, in my opinion, this is my opinion, it would be wonderful to see it get developed for the Village of Heartland and for the future of Heartland for the next, over the next fifty years, especially after the next twenty-seven. Hopefully, if the economy goes good, maybe a little less. But I think it would be very good. I do think that there's limited risk because of the Pago. As with anything of this magnitude, you know, obviously, there's risks on both sides. There's risk for the investor or the developer. And there's risk for the investor that has invested in the developer. And there's, there is some risks of where something catastrophic could happen in the village. But I think the commissioners need to ask themselves whether the outlook for the village is worth, you know, what, what does appear to be minimal risk but could turn large according to the legal opinion from our attorney. But there's no guarantee that that catastrophe would ever happen either. I think I've kind of made it clear. But I think it's, at this point, it's up to the elected and appointed officials to come up with those decisions. I'll open it one last time if anybody has any other questions or has anything to say about it. Or if they disagree that we shouldn't move towards deciding what we're going to do and coming to some type of decision, feel free to say it.
Can I just say something? Derek, in, in line eight eighty-four, if we get rid of owner-investor, what other language would you get rid of in there that would? Again, I don't, I just hate the owner-investor section of that. And do you guys hate any other language in that?
Real estate investment trust, real estate manager, general contractor. I mean, truly, developer to me is, that's, we want to sell it. If it hap, if this happened, we'd want it to go to another development.
Yeah, comparable developer.
Comparable, yeah.
I mean, I'd be comfortable in A if we just had it say to another comparable developer and then, you know, who has developed.
Yeah. Who has those criteria below.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because my, my, my only thing here with, with the, putting a period after the apartment project, it doesn't make sense. To me, that's an incomplete sentence until, and then the comma says, what happens until? If you just put a period there, that's an incomplete sentence and means nothing. You'd have to restructure the whole sentence.
But that's why I was shooting for. So I think if you guys are okay with it, in eight eighty-four, it'll just say, for the apartment project asset unless A to another comparable developer who has owned, developed, or constructed. You're fine with that? We will strike. So that at least guarantees a developer. Yeah, I think he is, right? And truly, the, the next part is giving them the opportunity. And I'm just saying that thousand is saying, somebody who owns a thousand units is probably a very qualified.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd be okay with that. So it would just say to another comparable developer which owns or has owned, developed, or constructed.
Yep.
And since, since we're doing this, and I, I want to make, I mean, this is a very big project. I want to make absolutely certain that we have the wording right. Especially if, if we're changing things, I think it has to be on the record of anything that was changed.
But that's actually where I was going to go too. Before you, if, if there is a motion and a vote, I just wanted to see if anybody had contingencies. I know we're waiting on exhibits, but if there's anything that should be read into the record as part of this. So eventually staff before any motion is made. And Derek, it's no surprise that it'll just be things that we make sure all get incorporated.
Question on the, we're going to change this to another comparable developer, developer. Do we want to say a developer who has, who owns or has owned or somebody who has developed?
I think that we're develop, well.
Development group, Three Leaf, maybe owns or has ownership in seven hundred apartment complexes. Maybe didn't develop those. I don't know, I'm just.
This is, this is where some of these get, get really tough. Because let's say, let's say someone owns a real estate investment trust. They might own the trust and underneath them is a development company, but they sell it to the trust. That, that, that's where this gets really tough. We were just talking about it. There's companies in Lake Country area where, you know, they own, if I'm not mistaken, they're a developer, but then they build homes under a different name, but it's all under the same thing. And I believe they have a solar company also, but all of those are all under the same, you know, umbrella. I'm just, I'm not trying to confuse anyone. I'm just looking. Our clerk is like, you know what, I'm going home. Actually, she's added right to Palmer's.
That's what I'm saying. Whatever, if we get to a motion, that's, we'll just want to make sure we, we kind of clean it up and, and everybody's got to be on board. Because again, I know we mentioned earlier, but today we agreed in the language is a fifty thousand dollar letter of credit or a hundred. Ryan Antman ran the numbers. We're comfortable with an eighty. I mean, there's.
Actually, and, and I'm going to clarify, and I understand that it may sound like I'm really pushing for the developer here. But it does continue to read and says, which owns or has owned, developed, or constructed multifamily apartment properties aggregating to at least two hundred and sixty-seven units or owns, is a primary investor in or manages multifamily apartment properties aggregating to at least one thousand units. I, I just feel like we're, we're passing that liability to, what I'm looking here is, do they have the money? When we sue them, do they have the money that they're going to have to finish the project? And I feel with the wording that that's covered, but like, we can, we can make changes like you.
And to be honest, we've talked about this language for probably the past two and a half months. This is, it has. This paragraph itself is very difficult.
This paragraph will become very, very important if things were started to change hands. And it would be, I mean, very important.
I think the changes to eight eighty-four, like we've been talking, eight eighty-four and eight eighty-five, like we were just talking about, I think takes a lot of, it puts a lot more clarity to who we want, if it ends up being sold, who we want it to be sold to.
Can you read us something aloud and Sandy can?
So I, if, if I may, I just tweaked it in a way that I think is what you guys are looking for.
You want to read it?
If that's okay.
Yeah, please.
So it would say, unless sub A to another comparable developer which has developed multifamily apartment properties aggregating to at least two hundred and sixty-seven units or another owner, investor, developer, real estate investment trust, real estate manager, general contractor, or similar real estate operator or company which owns, is a primary investor in or manages multifamily apartment properties aggregating to at least one thousand units.
I will on the recording.
Okay.
I like the first half of that a lot better than the second half. I don't like that you put the owner, investor, real estate investment trust, real estate manager back into the language at all. Personally.
So, but those are the types of companies that would not be developers, but might own a thousand plus units.
That's not who we want to take over a project that's incomplete. We want a comparable developer.
But keep in mind, it's already built, there's twenty seven years to run and they cannot sell it then to a real estate investment trust. That, that's the tough thing. That's why the two.
That's what I was gonna say, that's the hard part is in five years, let, take out that, that first part. This is still even talking once this is completed. If they want to sell it, he had mentioned there's companies in Brookfield that own thousands and thousands.
Billions, so MLG Capital owns billions of dollars of multifamily and they've never developed. But if they said tomorrow, we're gonna develop, they would, they would be well qualified to do that. Perhaps more qualified than us because of who they are.
It's a tough thing because there's all, it's moving parts the whole way. You know, it's like, you gotta get halfway through with the race. Go ahead.
I, I just said, I don't know, I think all we did was we plucked it out of here and put it down here and it's saying the exact same thing as it said from the get go. Like you could, if we're gonna sell it only to a developer that's developed or owned or developed two hundred and sixty seven unit complexes or to any of these other people that we just took out of lines two above and moved them down to here. I just, I think it's, you're saying the exact same thing.
And I'm gonna, Hector touched on this. Let's say this is only half built and they did sell it to someone, I, I'm just gonna throw a number. Someone that's worth a billion dollars. But all they do is own, they don't develop. The village does still have the remedy that we'll be calling Mr. Delamora up and saying, okay, start drafting the papers because we're gonna take them to, if they said, nope, we don't have to build the next half. We still can take him to court for it because they still have to fa- they still have to meet the agreements of the P U D. But Mr. Delamora was alluding to, there's not language that says automatically that they have to do it. But if they said, no, we're not gonna develop any more of it, we're just gonna stop at a hundred and thirty five units that were already built when we bought it, we could still go and force them to it. And basically going to court would be having a judge say.
He's disagreeing.
Go ahead.
Well, I'll just, as he's disagreeing, direct attention to line seven sixty eight where we already dealt with this exact issue, which means the village could seek specific performance against our successors or assigns. Meaning you can go show up in court and say, build the damn thing. That's what we already did as part of this process.
It all depends on the transfer vehicle that's used. If there is an assignment of the membership, uh, a sale of the membership, it's the same shell entity. We can't get specific performance. That's my response. So again, we're getting closer to closing the gap, but, uh, the gap is still there.
And I understand all this might not be on the same page. I mean, I, I just feel that, uh, whoever is in the charge of the village at that time when this were to come up, whether it's all the same people or whether it's not, there is paperwork, language and sp- specific parameters, even down to what materials has to be used, how the architecture has to be, because they should have been drawing for those types of things uh, uh, that have to be met. And, uh, I, I do agree with you and I understand that there's a gap. But.
So I don't think there is a gap and I'll reiterate line eight eighty three specifically includes that we will not sell, transfer or sign the apartment project asset or the membership interest in developer for the apartment project and your rights to enforce specific performance are to our successors and assigns. Meaning the people who take assignment and assumption of this agreement, which would also be someone buying our membership interest. This issue's been, uh, you know, and again, I think we started this by saying this is a policy decision and somehow now we're taking legal opinions on the record at plan commission. And we've spent, you know, nine months working on this agreement. So again, I, I really think it's important that we, that we, you know, find a path here with this language that, that everybody's comfortable with because we spent a lot of time, uh, and energy working on this.
And only, and I know it, part of the reason that we're just spending the time is because for some people, it's the first time that they're jumping in. So we're making sure that we, you know, cross the Ts and dot the Is.
I don't have a problem with, with A because we're, we're.
What line, what line?
Eight, eight eighty four.
Got it.
I don't have a problem with, with after A because, um, we're defining what A is underneath. The two sixty seven and the one thousand units. So it doesn't matter what is titled. It's just basically somebody who has the experience. So I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
But there could just be owners, but.
Yeah, but so what we're gonna, we're gonna do now, um, yeah, this is a lot of good useful information. Unless the board wants to say, no, I think it'd be appropriate now that we, uh, that we do, uh, you know, we know what we have before us. Mr. Delamora alluded to, this is one of the biggest, um, developments. And I don't think that, I'm not using the word biggest or largest, uh, to scare anyone. This is one of the largest opportunities the village has had, uh, especially in this case for not just some farmland, but for a blighted property. Obviously the plan commission, we do this every month. We know what we gotta do, but, uh, at some point we'll have to make a decision on we are, whether we're gonna say let's, uh, what we want to do for the village. That's what we're here for. I can tell you in my personal opinion, I think that this is an extremely valuable opportunity for the village that we have waited on a very long time, long before I even got on the board and it's been now seven years. So, uh, while TIF will go on for some time, thirty and forty years from now, there will be a substantial amount of tax revenue coming in. And as people say, there's not enough places to live in Heartland. It will also provide a heck of a lot of places for people to be able to come and move.
Well, I'll, I'll be glad to make a motion, but how do you want me to address eight, uh, line eight eighty four? Do you want me to show a?
I'm gonna default to the village manager.
Again, so.
Some type of a modification?
Maybe I'm naive, I'm newer, I've never been burnt. Um, this is all language if everything goes south.
Yeah.
Theoretically in forty eight months, we should all be out somewhere having a beer saying, I can't believe we spent an hour on that. But it could happen. So it's really what you guys are comfortable with. Uh, attorney De Lamora has given, you know, his opinion and he, his, his goal is to make sure that he mitigates as much risk for us as possible. I had this conversation with Ryan Antman in the very beginning of this project. There is some risk that the village will have with this no matter what. The risk we really mitigated was by a TIF. Let's say this project gets half developed. We are not out any money. We have built the infrastructure and we will get that, we get the first pack of money back up to a certain amount. So I don't have concerns about that. My concern, I, and I hear it, it happens that I remember they do sell it, we want to make sure somebody's qualified. We will have any exhibits that whatever is being developed has to meet the specific qualifications that we put forth and that are approved by the plan commission when they come back to us. So truly whatever language you guys are comfortable with, from eight eighty four to eight ninety, that the developer is also comfortable with. Again, I don't think we're gonna get something where we're one hundred percent satisfied and we're trying to get something from them. Again, you heard him say it, that most developments, they don't even have language like this in there. This is a quarry, it's a different project. There's certain people that could inva- it could build this, but in my opinion, once that earthwork is done, it's people coming in and putting foundation and padding in. You know, Payne and Dolan is get, has done quarries before. They're gonna be the ones doing all of this quarry work, correct? Yes, you can add, yeah, well. You get where I'm going is once that pad is ready, the utilities that go in, they're gonna have to be inspected by our building inspector. They're gonna have to meet code. Everything that they do is gonna have to meet what we want. The risk is if something happens along the way or if they want to sell it. Again, they're not gonna, I, I, I jokingly said, we had a clerk in the police department who owned farmland, sold it. And then I own like three hundred multifamily units in Iowa. They've never developed, I don't want them to own it. That's why we bumped it up to the thousand. Again, there could be somebody who owns it. But we have specific performance to make them develop it to the standards. We would have to sue them, take them to court to get them to finish building it. But truly the risk, we're not losing money, we're not putting out any TIF money. So it's really whatever you guys feel as far as a comfort of what you wanted to say. But before any motion, I would just make sure that staff doesn't have any, you know, s- there's a, we agreed upon an eighty thousand dollar letter of credit deposit. That is what we talked about earlier, John said he was fine with that, John Ford. In, in the agreement, it was fifty thousand, we said a hundred, we ran numbers, we're comfortable with eighty. So that would have to get updated in here. And then whatever you guys want for eight eighty four, is there anything else that would be contingent on?
Final review by staff, excuse me, final review by staff, including myself of all of the exhibits. At this point, I don't think that there are any issues. Ryan Antman has done a tremendous job in making sure that the, the documents contain this, the specifics. Again, what I'm trying to deal with is my experience. I've had situations where the specs were laid out. Someone succeeded and came before the board and said, I can't do it. It's too costly, the cost of material, whatever. I'd like to substitute this for that.
Yeah, what?
Verbiage.
Can you repeat your verbiage at the microphone, please? And it, you know, I, I, I know it's for the next session, but they could approve that. You could make recommendations at the next section too.
So the language, um, if we were to revise what was presented to the plan commission, um, to address some of the topics we've discussed tonight, it would read instead in subsection A on line eight eighty four to another comparable developer which has developed multifamily apartment properties aggregating to at least two hundred and sixty seven units or.
Hold on, pause. So that first section is saying a comparable developer who has developed two hundred and sixty seven units. Okay. And, but the hard part, like we said, is after this is fully developed, they want to be able to have the opportunity. If they, if they ever, cause again.
Bestment, you, you.
It is.
You sell your stocks, you sell.
Uh, continuing then would be or another owner, investor, developer, real estate investment trust, real estate manager, general contractor or similar real estate operator or company which owns, is a primary investor in or manages multifamily apartment properties aggregating to at least one thousand units. And the sentence continues.
And the thought behind that is that's a pretty big, you know, like we mentioned Mandel and we jokingly said, one day it could be a Mandel that buys us or it could be, we, we don't know. And they're just trying to not limit their future of it. You know, it, it's weird because this is a plan in a development. When you think of other multifamilies that aren't part of a TIF or part of a P U D, they can sell it to whoever they want and do what. This just happens to have a P U D because they're getting specific things, TIF, all of that. So we have freedom to see what, whatever you guys like for the.
But just gonna ask our clerk a question because I want to verify something. Once you take the recording, can that please be sent to the village board and the plan commission stating what was just read? So everybody is on the same page and nothing is missed and everybody knows that that's what the wording was changed to?
Yeah, sure.
And Derek, that comes from a previous TIF that there were items cited in a plan commission village board that did not make it into the P U D. But, but we want to make sure everything that we do discuss truly gets in.
So we're only covering the P U D? Cause if that wording is gonna change and if people are good with it, it makes it possible for you to make them. If someone wants to make a motion, they can just make a motion to.
I'm not approving the rezoning either.
You are as well.
Yeah, you can, uh, you have the right to. I'm not saying you have to.
I would just ask that, and somewhere in there you mentioned an eighty thousand dollar letter of credit or deposit. And Derek, you're, you'll understand what we mean by that? Okay. Yeah, and the exhibits, like that staff can review them.
And, and attorney as well, staff and attorney.
The, hold on. What do you say? If you, I think I know where you're going, so I'm just, I'm, I'm helping this along. It would be, you can include the tax, however you want to word it, because you know, I always read it back, but you'd be, uh, approving, uh, the rezoning and the P U D agreement for the project at the quarry with the, uh, stipulation that the eighty thousand dollar letter of credit.
Be put into the letter in place of what's in it now.
Be put into the letter that's in place.
Mr. Taylor's stated revisions.
Mr. Taylor stated revisions of line eight eighty four and sub paragraph A on.
Yep, and includes the exhibits and final review by staff.
Review and approve.
So that motion is exactly what we just talked about.
Sandy, you got that? Real quick, truly all we're doing is saying the eighty thousand dollars, well, I'll wait till there's a second.
There hasn't been a motion.
I thought that's what.
Well, I.
That'd be a long time.
Did you want to read this whole thing?
Need an official motion.
Well, you don't have, you gotta make a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to, uh, to, okay, I'll, I'll try this now. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the proposed P U D development and rezoning that's being sought by Three Leaf Partners LLC on property tax keys HAV zero seven three zero nine eight one, HAV zero seven three zero nine eight five, HAV zero seven three zero nine eight six and HAV zero seven three zero nine eight seven located at seven hundred and seven oh one West Capital Drive. Uh, this also will include the eight hundred or eighty thousand dollar letter of deposit. Credit, I'm sorry. And also the, the revised statement that Mr. Taylor has put into notes about, and also the, the exhibits as well. Uh, and that was, uh, line, what, eight eighty?
Eight eighty four, subsection A.
Okay. Exactly.
So you got it, Sandy, what you missed then talking just the line eight eighty four that Mr. Taylor stated and, uh, staff review and approval of the exhibits.
Second. That's an easy.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the proposed rezoning and P U D agreement for the project at the quarry, which is, uh, this is for Three Leaf Partners LLC on property tax keys HAV zero seven three zero nine eight one, HAV zero seven three zero nine eight five, HAV zero seven three zero nine eight six and HAV zero seven three zero nine eight seven located at seven hundred and s- also seven hundred one West Capital Drive. In that motion includes that added to the agreement must be the language stating that there must be an eighty thousand dollar letter of credit. That line eight eighty four shall have the wording as read by Mr. Taylor at the plan commission meeting on April third, twenty twenty four and also includes the exhibits with the stipulation that staff is allowed to make final revi- final review of those exhibits. Any discussion?
Can you just make sure both legal?
Is anyone not okay with the motion that I just, uh, read all six pages of it? Are you okay? Good. Our clerk, I know that was a long one.
Got it.
We're good. I'm just, I'm gonna clarify with legal. Did I state it properly where it's understood clearly? Good. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, then I'll call the question. All in favor? I, all opposed? That motion is carried.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the plan commission architectural board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned. Okay, at this time I will call to order the village board meeting, uh, plan, anybody that's only on plan commission, uh, just note that please, uh, you know, don't, you had your chance to talk. Um, sure. Obviously we were all in the same room, so typically this would be at different times and we would go through this all again for the fun of it. I'm gonna ask that we do not do that. But I will call this meeting to order, um. do not do that. But I will call this meeting to order, and this is the, as a, as a roll call, other than the fact that Mr. Trutchal is not here. Trustee Trutchal is.
Right, true.
Oh, she got on. Trustee Trutchal is not here. Sean, trustee DeBoer.
No matter how it's worded, it's clearly stated here as a distinction.
Guys, hey, guys, you're on the mic. So for a roll call, trustee Pfeiffer is here, President Fannerstil's here, trustee Connors here, trustee Holquist is here, and present also is trustee DeBoer. Trustee DeBoer, hello?
Hi, how are you?
Doing wonderful. How are you?
I'm good, thanks.
Trustee DeBoer is also here. We do have trustee Trutchal and trustee Walshlager, which are not here, but are excused. The Plan Commission just got done approving a motion that was referenced. Everyone was already here, so just to recap, our first item for the Village Board is to review in consideration of Heartland Quarry and proposed PUD development, whose approval and rezoning is being sought by Three Leaf Partners LLC on property tax keys HAV 0730981, HAV 0730985, HAV 0730986, and HAV 0730987, located at 700 and 701 West Capital Drive. So what the Village Board needs to review and consider is a proposed rezoning and PUD agreement for the project. I'm gonna add, that is properly on the agenda, but a motion and a second was taken, and a vote of approval was taken by the Plan Commission, that, the wording I just stated with all the tax codes at 700 and 701 West Capital Drive, that they approved rezoning and the PUD agreement for the project with the stipulation, that language needs to include that there should be an $80,000 security deposit. The wording on 884 of the PUD agreement needs to reflect the words that were spoken at the Plan Commission meeting by Mr. Taylor of Three Leaf, and that it also needs to include the exhibits with the stipulation that staff gets a final review of those exhibits. That's what was sent forth to this Village Board moments ago from the Plan Commission. We're not going to re-go through what we did at Plan Commission. So since everyone was present, I will just say on the record, in case someone were to grab the Village Board, we've been here for an hour and a half, everybody that's in the room was present for the entire Plan Commission meeting. I strongly encourage, if you wanna hear all of it, to go and grab the, grab the recording from the Plan Commission meeting that happened on April 3, 2024. Anybody that would like to do whatever they need to do, feel free to do it.
Screen. I get all that, but just all the specifics that you read there.
There you go. I, I have the other part, so. All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the Heartland Quarry, a proposed PUD development project, whose approval and rezoning is sought by Three Leaf Rivers Partners LLC on property tax keys HAV 0730981, HAV 0730985, HAV 0730986, and HAV 0730987, located at 700 and 701 West Capital Drive, for the proposed rezoning and PUD agreement of the project. And included in there is an $80,000 line of credit, a revision on line 884 subsection A stipulated by Mr. Taylor, and that exhibits are finalized and approved and brought to the staff to look them over as well. I think I've covered everything.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the rezoning and PUD agreement for the project that's located at 700 and 701 West Capital Drive, with four tax keys on that property, along with the stipulation that the wording in the agreement, or that, in, with the wording that an $80,000 security deposit needs to be included. Line 884 wording has to be as read by Mr. Taylor at the Plan Commission on April 3, 2024, and that all exhibits will be included with the opportunity and stipulation that staff does get a final review of those exhibits. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Shante. We are adjourned.